Anyway, the zoning board that met on that property out by you. You know, I recognize you, but somebody said your the thing came up David Menke. And he goes, this guy goes, well, that David Menke's wife was talking a lot, but I didn't hear him say. That was Debbie Gray. Oh. Oh, gosh.
There I am, talking a lot.
And I do feel like I have to add that it could be true for the real David Menke, too, that his wife might have talked a lot. She on the call.
Oh, gosh. Hi Becky. Did you have the lobster rolls the other day? No.
Not a seafood fan, just a 320.
I'm not a and I wasn't going to pay $22 for something I'm not. That seems like a lot, doesn't it? But the people we sat next to for a little while, they thought they were well worth it. I don't know. More power to them, I guess. Well, it is nine o'clock. And this meeting will be on webex and phone conference and live streamed on the internet. Uh, the governor of the state of Minnesota has issued executive order 20-01 declaring a peacetime emergency and coordinating Minnesota's strategy to protect Minnesota from COVID-19. On March 24th, the Pine County Board of Commissioners declared a local emergency for Pine County. Based on these conditions, the chair of the Pine County Board of Commissioners have determined that the requirements of Minnesota statute 13D-21 subdivision one have been met. And it is uh not practical or prudent for all members of the county board to meet in person. The public is invited to join the meeting remotely by phone. Uh, and you're probably already doing that. Uh, we'll call the meeting to order and rise for the pledge. Hi, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chair, there are no additions or corrections.
Thank you. We'll make our own. Ludwig moves.
Moral second.
More seconds. The clerk, is there any discussion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
District five, Mr. Ludwig.
I think he's saying I, but I'm not hearing him.
Hi.
Thank you. District one, Chair Holland.
Yes.
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Hi.
District three, Commissioner Shapie.
Hi.
District four, Commissioner McRae.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to continue with our presentations from departments. And first up today is Terry Fawcett with probation. Terry.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, President of the Board. Can you hear me all right? Problems hearing me?
We can hear you, Terry.
Okay, thank you. Um. So I just kind of want to walk you down uh these things that I put together with the budget. Um, you know, the main thing with probation as we as we know is the CPO reimbursement dollars continue to to be down and shrink. Um, our revenue was up this year as Kelly indicated last week. Uh, we projected 144,000 revenue came in at 163. So that part of it was good. Uh, that that's a continual battle. Um, the good thing in the collection of our local corrections fees, even with the pandemic. Uh, the agents have done a great job. We projected at 43,000 this year and they've already collected 83% of that at 35. At 58% of the year. Um, you know, fees really have ultimately paid for the tuition, so that's been good. Um, Kelly gave the auditor's report last week, talked about the difference between new levy dollars and salary benefit costs, the probation would be about $5,500. Um, but as uh David indicated, that could be further reduced by 24, $25,000 if the cultural community coach position would go to the uh to the children's collaborative. And so that meeting will be on September 9th and we'll have a better, we'll have a better idea then. Um, some good things that have happened here during during COVID is probation is one of the first probation departments in the country to deliver virtual cognitive skills program. They actually worked with the authors um of the curriculum uh and how to how to do this um and do it, do it correctly. And so um it's really kind of neat that a small department gets to have some national recognition for that. Um, Pine County probation has done a ton of training uh since the outset of the pandemic and um, most of those have been free training opportunities. And so we're trying to look for for positives and and good things that have come as a result. Um, we have now begun a transition to a paperless office. So uh kudos to my staff for doing that. Um, working with Becky to allocate less money uh for security detention costs. So last year we allocated 170,000 in that secure area. Uh, we're going to shoot for 125 this coming year. And more money in non-secure placement, 195 versus 150. Uh, this is a big rise as well as our commitment to keep kids in our community using the evening reporting center. So I'm sure Becky will talk more about that later. Um, our budgetary increases are really personnel costs. The rest of the budget remains neutral. Uh, we did come on the county pay scale as of July 2019. Uh, that's increased things. Um, our caseload workload grant continues to pay almost $60,000 towards one position. Uh, we get that uh every year from the DOC. Um, our training budget this year has been underutilized. Um, really basically because our state conference was was canceled. Um, we do contribute to our our training line item uh with our lead program, cog skills, driving with care, et cetera. Uh, our community alternatives line item, we have $14,000 in that. That was really significantly down due to COVID. But that's really an important line item based on trying to do more community-based outreach with kids versus any type of facility cost. Our probation continues to provide effective services. You know, the last time we did the CPO new position formula was in 2017. At that point, it indicated based on arrest court filings and caseloads that there was still a need for an additional FTE. Um, to be honest with you, I can't tell you that is for certain today only because the DOC has not given us the numbers for 2018 and 2019 and and several counties have requested that information. Um, there are, there are some other areas, um, you know, depending on where we come in at consideration to cut, but they all have, you know, consequences. We talked about the community alternatives, uh, safety supplies and or supplies in general, the $3,000 line item, uh, reference books is 800 bucks. But um, some depending on uh where we are in our curriculum, sometimes we don't use that. Juvenile transportation that we put in last year, it's only $1,000, but it's important resource for kids. Um, our other professional tech services line item, um, you know, we've, we've paid for speakers out of that. Now we just paid a big bill on advertising uh for one of our grant positions and then our UA supplies come out of that. Um, we've, we've already reduced that uh from 6750 to 5500 and now put it in for 5,000 this coming year. Um, and I guess lastly, um, this didn't cost more money. We just reallocated, we're allocated the money someplace else. Uh, but association dues is something that um we voted on as as CPO directors to depend on how many agents you have um to charge dues uh for each county. For example, if you're uh under 10, I think it was 250 bucks. Up to 10 was or 10 to 15 was uh 500 and then beyond that was 750. And the big reason for that was ensuring that, especially with the cancellation of our conference, but to make sure that we're we're funding our our lobbyist who's um, you know, been very, very important uh this this last year. So um with that, I would open it up for questions if if you had any.
Thanks, Terry. I know from the, from the AMC Blue Ribbon Committee, we're kind of done with our work for a while now, but uh we met last week and you know, the question comes continually from Jack Swanson up in Roseville County is as as our jail population have decreased and we put more pressure on probation. What, when will we see some seamlessness, I guess, you know, so uh we could reduce jail staff and and maybe our total staff numbers would stay the same, but um maybe not. And we put more resources towards probation, no matter what delivery system of probation we we have. I don't know. That's kind of an open-ended question probably, but.
Well, uh, it it it's um, it's it's probably what caused this last year when I was the president has caused caused the most frustration for me personally, and I know for a lot of people in in community supervision, it's um, you know, everybody's and everybody should talk about police reform right right now. I get that. Um, but what happened along the way after May and the George Floyd incident, it shifted focus 100% to police reform. And people in the state of Minnesota through the legislative session quit talking about funding corrections. And and no matter how many times we continue to try to put that in front of them, and I know there's a conversation, I think, going on right now regarding the the two prisons. Um, that that's been the biggest frustration. You can't, you can't have one without the other. You know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna reduce or if you're gonna have early release programs from jails and prisons, where are they gonna go? You know, uh, Minnesota continues to be one of the um, one of the lowest populations in state prisons in the country. And that's been by design because people in the state of Minnesota believe in people should have second chances and they're going to be back in our communities. Most people that go to prison don't go there very long or, you know, and their sentencing guidelines. And so um, you know, and and my office, uh, in particular, we paid for it in the pre-trial. You know, in the pre-trial numbers. Um, and those are including pending felon. So um, I don't know what that answer is, but um, it's, it's not going to change. Nothing's going to change. I I'll leave it with this, Commissioner. There is an effort now being done through our association, and this is something I brought up to Commissioner Schnell twice. And now it's, I think, getting some momentum is there was discussion about bringing in the council and state governments to facilitate facilitate conversation about doing things differently. And that was my final message to Commissioner Schnell, leaving uh my term as president was until we really get at the table and you have a conversation irrespective of delivery systems and so forth, and really talk about a better way of funding and supporting community corrections in the state, nothing will ever change. You know, and and as somebody who's testified in legislature, you know, another frustration is you go in front of the legislature and they give you five minutes or less to tell everything about the history of the three delivery systems and why you need funding. And if you're not done in five minutes, they kick you out of the room, you know. And so it seems to me that that's not the best way to go about business. And those are the the messages I think we have to continue to deliver to the legislature to say um, we're, we're, we're still a long ways off of making things better.
I appreciate that, Terry, and I I appreciate you educating us so that we can carry that same mission. It's just as frustrating for us to in little tiny Pine County seem to kind of have it figured out and then go to the legislature and get, you know, that very short window of opportunity to say something. And it seems like half the time it falls on deaf ears. Um, but we keep trying. But uh, I I would, I would hope we could. I don't know if we can get some pilot projects around that say this, this is working. I mean, I think we have proof that what we're doing is working. Um, but but we need to, we need to change our mindset about where we're spending our money, I think.
I agree.
Thank you very much. Does anybody got any other questions, comments for Terry?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Ludwig, I have one question. I know you were, or I don't know if it's for Terry, but is there any reason, reason or is the state giving a reason why they're not going up to the 50% funding on the probation officer?
Well, Commissioner, I'll answer that. Um, no, uh, when I testified the last time, um, actually Marion O'Neal asked um, the commissioner that question directly. Um, please tell us why counties aren't getting 50% funding and why that hasn't happened since 1996. Um, he didn't have an answer. He said he would deliver that answer back. Um, and he had not, he has not delivered that answer back to the legislature. Um, and he, and I may have mentioned this before, he, when we got done testifying, he leaned over and said to me, I thought you're, I was hoping you'd bail me out on this one. And I said, sorry, you know, it's uh, because that's a question we've had for years is, you know, it's, it's, it's been interesting since my, my five years in Pine County. I've only seen the finance people from the DOC one time, and that was at my very first CPO director's meeting. They came up and gave some type of explanation on how how they do things financially when when they get the the budget. But to to really answer your question, that what what makes things um so difficult is the the commissioner has 100% authority on how that money is distributed. And so um, I don't think he wanted to answer the question because at the end of the day, and why we want to have this bigger discussion with council of state governments is um, you know, there are some that say that maybe the Department of Corrections should get out of field supervision, which they do very little of anyway, and then just focus on the prisons. Because at the end of the day, when you talk about funding, and it happened again this time, which is why the on the chopping block, it's the prisons dominate the funding discussion at the expense of the community supervision.
Thank you. Thanks, Terry.
You're welcome.
Any, any other comments for Terry? If not, we'll move along to county attorney. Talk about Law Library County Attorney and Victim Services, I presume.
Exactly. Uh, good morning, um, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Wonder if I could try to share um a slide I have. It's okay with Ryan. All right. Does everybody see that? Okay. So I I guess I'll start with the easy one. That's the Law Library. I don't have a slide for that, but um, that one, of course, is going to be a zero dollar ask. Um, that usually just nets out from uh the library fees that we get through the court system. Um, usually when we resolve cases, there are fines and fees. There's usually a $10 fee tacked on for the Law Library, and that's how the Law Library gets income, and then that income maintains the library. So if you're ever looking for an easy committee assignment, you might have to fight Josh over that one. Um, so well-earned per diem for that uh, for that one. But um, yeah, it's, it's always interesting. We always um talk about we really can't spend money on that one. We find projects and stuff, but um that one always seems to net out. We usually have a surplus. So that's one of those easy ones that we we get to deal with. The next one uh that I'll talk about um is the Victim Services Coordinator. And this is one that's mostly funded by a $70,000 grant. And just an idea of what our Victim Services Coordinator does is that um, just this past year, 2019, or actually, this is the fiscal year. She provided services to over 1,000 people, um, sent over 1,500 notifications to victims and witnesses. 956 contacts um about the criminal justice system. These are people that I call her up and and ask her things about um HROs or her cases and and help with that. Um, it's rather daunting for somebody who doesn't know a lot about the criminal justice system to um understand and get information about that. So it's been a very helpful service. Um, 600 contacts on victims' rights, um, taking notification, and then she provides other services as well, now and see crisis response, referrals, resources programs. Uh, she's been absolutely tremendous, asset to our office, asset to the community, um, asset to our cases. And uh, very well worth the money on that one. Um, there is a small county ask on that one. I'll talk about that later. But uh, recently received an email from somebody who's worked with Victim Services Coordinators um around the state, and this person said that Luanne's the best one that um she's ever worked with. So uh, some high compliment there for for our county and that's the work that she's doing. So next, um, we'll go to my office, uh, the county attorney's office, and just give you an idea of where we've been sitting for um the past years. And look, we've, for the most part, plateaued off on the adult, these are only adult criminal cases. Uh, there's a number of other things to do too, but always found that this was a good metric. These are the misdemeanor and above cases, gross misdemeanor felonies. And we're fairly in line with how we've been charging since about 2016, around 1,400 cases, adult cases a year, and we get over 2,000 referrals. Obviously, we don't charge every case that we get referred to our office. Some of them need to go back for further investigation. Some of them are just not crimes. You know, you get a lot of, you know, referrals, like my neighbor um gave his middle finger to me and a person should be charged. Well, we can't really charge a crime on something like that. So we we get a lot of things like that, too. But um, that's how we're sitting with our charges. How's that compared to the region? Um, we're fairly close to Carlton County, still ahead of them. They're probably the closest county to us, but if you look at the the list, counties with larger populations like Shisago, Isani, um, charge a lot less cases than we do. Um, so in our region, uh, we uh came in number one again this year. I I think we've been number one since about 2015, 2014. But we also have um some of the least amount of attorneys and more cases per attorney if we're to go that way. And that doesn't count, of course, the traffic cases. More numbers, um, we have a high juvenile caseload. Um, we're down a bit this year, our for 2019. I I think that's do a lot to Terry's work and the restorative justice and the diversions that we do on a number of those cases. So they really don't go through court. Not known, of course, our child support civil cases, all the um, the advice and things that we do for other departments, um, CHIPS, guardians, uh, termination parental rights, civil commitments. We've had a lot of civil commitments. Those have increased substantially. And the strengths with the offices, typical squad analysis here, we have strong collaboration with other offices, departments. Um, I think you've heard this over and over again, but we have a wonderful county. Uh, I every, every department, every office in this county, uh, we get along with great. Um, I I enjoy working with the other leaders of um that we have. I I think we have the optimal team that we have now, so I'm I'm very happy with that. Um, this has been a wonderful place to work and especially in my capacity. I I've absolutely loved it, and it's because of the people. Uh, weaknesses, we haven't kept pace with growth again, growth again, we are low on our attorneys and I guess legal assistance, too. And of course, opportunities, we still work all those other programs, um, collaboration with other departments, especially probation with our past department with the FCI Sandstone, the ERC, working with Health and Human Services, Sheriff's Office. Um, that's been phenomenal. Um, I I think that this county stands really above the other counties in Minnesota and the type of collaboration and the work that we've done. Um, threats, obviously a high caseload. Um, the court system continues to decentralize. Uh, when I started as a prosecutor 15 years ago, you'd go to the court and hand them all the materials and they'd start a case, open things up. And over the years, as there's been more technology, it falls more and more on uh county offices to actually do these cases, to start the cases in the in the courtroom and such. So it continues to decentralize and we end up doing more of the work. And of course, there's always a competitive labor market, less people are going to law school nowadays. Um, more uh people in the new generation want to work in urban environments and not so much the small towns. So it gets more difficult to recruit people, and that's why. But I always feel that salaries and retaining the good people that we have are important and knock on wood, uh, my attorney staff has been fairly stable um for the last few years now. So what's the bottom line? Well, the bottom line is that uh, for my office's budget, it's a 7.4 increase is the request. Um, the entire increase is really based on salaries and wages. It's because of market increase and the county contribution. I'm not asking for any increases on any of their line items. We're still um falling under uh those line items at the end of the year. And this past year, uh, we've managed pretty well because we're not really going to conferences. A lot of conferences are online and um, a lot of the fees are have been free on those conferences and things like that. So we're probably gonna have, uh, we'll be under, um, especially in our uh conference budget and things like that. So I I think we're gonna be pretty well this year. That's why I'm fairly confident we can have a 0% increase on those other line items. So we're only asking for salaries, wages. Law Library, zero dollar ask, again, that's a net. Um, and Victim Services. We're seeking um $7,541.50, which is 9% more than what we had last year, and that's solely due to, again, salaries, wages. But um, the grant covers the rest of the funding on that position, which is 70,000. And this is a grant um that's been around, I believe, since the 1970s. I I don't think that's ever going to go away. So there'll always be that that cushion there on that. So I think that's all I had, but that's uh, if there's any questions, be happy to take them.
Thanks, Reece. Where does that that grant? Where does that come from the state or is that?
So uh, Mr. Commissioner, I, uh, Mr. Chair, so it's both, um, it's both the state and federal, so it's a nice mix of the two. So one's from the DOJ, um, and then the other percentage is um from the OJB.
Questions for Reece, anybody? You you wowed us, Reece.
Uh, I like that, thanks.
Boy, the clock bangs a lot, doesn't it? Okay, we're gonna move on then to Health and Human Services. Becky.
And Reece, I think you're still sharing your screen if you want to end screen sharing.
Okay. Um.
I like the picture, though. Where is that?
How do I do that?
Uh, if you hover on your screen up at the top, you should get a little pop-up that says end sharing or something like that.
You're not sitting on the deck of a cabin and they just have your camera pointed out there, do you?
No, I wish. There we go. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Chair, would you prefer to hear Veteran Services first, or HHS?
I have Veteran Services on my, top of my agenda, so we can take them in order, and Barb looks like her smiley face is all ready to go.
She's ready to go.
All right. Take it away, Barb.
Good morning, members of the board. Ryan, I also have my slide to share, so I'm just requesting the ability to share that.
You should be able to do that, Barb.
All right, I am. All right, let me see here, so is everyone able to view this slide? The Veteran Service Budget, did it come up yet? Yes? Awesome. All right, so everyone's picture disappeared except for Ryan, so I will zoom them out. Welcome, everyone, I am here to present the Veteran Service Budget. And I just created a slide similar to what Kelly had shown you with hers on her presentation day. It just outlines the, and I'll just go through them, and we'll go through them quickly, and it just shows you the increase in each line item. And we're asking for an 8.87 increase mainly due, well, actually, pretty exclusively due to salaries. So if you will start at the beginning here, and I can highlight, we receive a $10,000 Community Veteran Service Office Grant each year. That's what you had approved at the last August board meeting. So thank you very much. We are looking at a 0% increase in that, 0% increase in van donations, we receive veterans' van donations from community organizations to offset the van trips that we, you'll see that later on in the expenses, hopefully those compensate. As you can see, we haven't received any yet in 2020, mainly because a lot of those community organizations, we attend those meetings, the Veteran Service Office will attend, and a lot of those have been postponed, online, different types of things. So our salary increase is a 10%, and that's due to, there are two permanent employees in that line item, that would and so there's a 2.9% increase, and a step increase for Mindy and Ben. We'll highlight this line item later, as you can see, we're significantly under budget in our part-time, but there is a 2.9% increase. And we'll, hopefully, we can offset what we're asking for from 2020 funds. So our county contribution is up, and the reason that that is up is because we didn't figure in 2020, there's an added contribution for Karen's contribution, which we, Veteran Services only is allocated a third of her salary, and she does a great job, and we're so thankful and welcome to have her, as she greets veterans. But we don't allocate all of her salary to Veteran Service Budget, just a third, because that's, Becky will talk about how that's distributed through the rest of HHS budget. So there's increase, when there's an increase in salary, there's increase in parent and telephone, so we're asking for an increase there. Our parent FICA, we're not asking for an increase in telephone. Our postage and freight is up this year, and one of the reasons is, is the veterans, the grants, all of those have to be sent by mail. So unlike most of the other items that we send, they're requiring that it is actually posted, sent. So we do use the postage quite a bit, there's a 0% increase in conferences and registration and repair maintenance of computer, travel, eyelid, auto insurance, there is a, I just want to highlight this, I put a negative 30% to kind of offset some of the other the other, there is, we decreased the amount that we allocate to the CVSO grant. And the reason, this is the first year that I've been involved with, actually, Mindy and I walked through the CVSO grant, and we, I like, this is exactly as it looks with what we submitted to the Veterans Department, the Minnesota Veteran Services Department, we allocated 3,000 of the salaries, and this is what we've done in the past, I just am now involved on a level so that I can see that. So it looks like a decrease. So don't be alarmed, we're still gonna get the same great service, we're just allocating, we're just matching our grant budget line item to our county budget, so that it will look exactly the same. And you'll receive a savings, we'll allocate some of that grant to our, to salaries. The last office supplies went up, the reason is, we have we were doing coffee talks in 2020, we hope to be starting those again, and so we're gonna be providing donuts and coffee and all kinds of exciting stuff to the veterans that attended those. In January, we were seeing 28 veterans come to the coffee talk. And we were seeing some success before COVID-19. The last thing I want to highlight, as we go down to same amount of revenue, same an expensive 8.09% increase is this number down here, 12,923 is the increase for 2021. But I have a solution, if you're willing. So if you can go back up to the line item, which talks about, or right here, this line item, Ben has been on leave for a significant amount of time. And he will continue to be on leave for significant, for the foreseeable future, I'm unsure when he's coming back. I would anticipate a $12,000 savings in that line item that could be carried over from 2020, if permissible, if you would want to do that, because right now in that line item, we are only at 27%. So there will be a significant, I'm anticipating upwards of a $12,000 savings, because he's currently on an unpaid leave at the moment. So, so really, it could wash out, the two could wash, wash out, because we are significantly under budget, which I'm always glad, I mean, I'm sure you're always glad to hear we're under budget, but we're doing fine. Mindy is forging ahead without him, it's been what it is. There's been, she's been working hard during this time, there's been an increase in grants and and such, but Karen's of much assistance, so that is all I have, I will, I would like to stop sharing, so I can see everyone, if that's all right. If I can push the stop button here. And hopefully I go back to everyone. So, does anyone have any questions for me and the Veteran Service Budget?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ludwig, so how is the van activity, as far as carrying the activity to and from the hospital, is that, did that see a change in the last few months?
Yes, when the, when COVID first started, or when we first, when it first became an issue, we saw relatively few van rides. But now that we are returning to do weekly trips, because now I think the veterans, you know, it's transportation to Superior and Minneapolis and St. Cloud, they picked up again, because the limitations on people seeing their physicians has really loosened up, so now you're able to get back into your, to see your physician. So there was a low for a couple months, but I think we're back up there again, where we're providing quite a few van rides.
And we still have volunteer drivers there?
Yes, we haven't.
Is there enough of them?
Is there enough of them? Well, there's never enough, but, because we're always actively recruiting for people to drive the van, but I think we've had a few solid drivers that have hung with us over the last couple months, so I haven't seen a need to cancel any rides.
Barb, I would like to just make a comment, and that is, because I have during this last year, gone through the process of being approved for veterans' benefits, and it's it's quite a process, but Mindy has hung in there, and we've got through that. The thing I've been very impressed with is the veterans services that are available, if you're willing to do them via phone conference with these, instead of going and having this half-hour consultation, you're able to do them over the phone or on video, and that, they've worked very well for me. And I don't know if that's the case for every veteran, but that has saved a lot of travel time, and once, once I got in into the system, the people that I have had contact with have been just wonderful people. The getting, getting the approval process to the finish line was a long, long process, but we got there, so.
Yeah. I'm glad you had a good experience. It is a very detailed process, and Mindy has been doing a lot of phone. When we first, I was thinking, whenever, when first COVID first arrived, she was doing a lot of phone conferences, and then I knew that she was meeting people, like they were pulling their cars up in the parking lot so that she, they could sign, because they had to physically sign some claims or grants, so I know she was doing a lot over the phone, and then kind of meeting people just here in the parking lots all over to try to get their signature, so she was really going up and above to try to meet people where they were at, if they wanted her to come out, and you know, sign at their doorstep, she'd leave it for them, and they could return it by mail. So she's done a really great job going up and above to meet our veterans when things are changing all the time.
She met me in the McDonald's parking lot, and she just didn't do it for me. She was there for somebody else, and said, "I'm gonna be there at 3:15," or whatever, and I pulled in and signed on the hood of her Jeep, and because it's, everything else you can kind of do electronically, it seems like, except the Veteran Service paperwork.
We recently, we just started a new program, and it was lucky for us, because of COVID-19, they offered a no startup fee, which that was very significant, and hopefully we can transition to a few of them being electronic with this new program that's approved by the Minnesota Veterans Office. But Mindy will go up and above to meet people wherever they need to, and I've seen her do a great job.
Thanks, Barb.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I think we got it, thank you. Becky?
Thank you, I am just gonna take a minute and grab my PowerPoint presentation. Try to share that. Hopefully, everybody can see it.
I think we all have it also in front of us to follow with Becky, so.
Okay. Are you able, I'm curious, are you able to see it right now?
Yes.
Okay, so let's see, good morning, everybody, so in your presentation, and hopefully everybody can see, this is the 2021 HHS Budget Presentation. A lot of work goes into this, I'd really like to start by thanking the HHS management team for all their work and everything that they do to make this budget a reality, it usually usually takes about four months to put together, so definitely appreciate all their time and attention to it, and getting it to its final form. Okay, so in the 2021 budget, I think you've heard from a lot of department heads already, that there were some certain challenges in all of our budgets, so the first one is personnel costs. Prior to doing some vacancy management and some reduction in other expenses, HHS was out of the gate about $465,000 in the hole, and so much of that, a ton of that was due actually to personnel costs, and so in later slides, I'll chat about how we reduce some of that gap between revenue and expenses. Another challenge is really how we bill out rent and other department-wide expenses. Basically, in a nutshell, it has, the way we bill it out now, we've been encouraged to bill it out per the auditors, is really creating a loss in some of the amount of the reimbursement to HHS. So we've had to try to find other areas to make up some of that gap. And then I would also share, it's interesting and challenging to budget for public health and other areas in HHS, with so much unknown, as we're moving into a pandemic, and I'm pretty sure we'll still be in a pandemic next year, so it was, we did our best job budgeting for that with a lot of unknown. So back earlier in August, as of August 11th, there was about a $265,000 difference between revenues and expenses in the HHS budget. So I just kind of pressed pause there and brought that first iteration of the budget to the HHS Committee, and its commissioners Helen and Chafee, who sit on that committee, and just requested some feedback on how they would like to see that gap narrowed. And so several options were presented, we could use fund balance from 2020, we could continue to trim placement expenses, could cut $20,000 in placement for a set aside for future years of the Evening Reporting Center, could cut personnel, or be less conservative in some areas of revenue projection. And obviously, the other choice was do some kind of combination of all of the above, and that last one, a combination of the above, that was the desired choice of the HHS Committee. So these next few slides are gonna kind of take you through each of those recommendations and show you how they were weaved into the 2021 budget. So first, we're gonna hopefully use some fund balance from 2020. And so currently, as we sit right now, the department's revenue should exceed expenses when 2020 wraps up. And so how did, how did we get there? So there were, we got there in a couple different ways. First, there were some furloughs when COVID hit. Almost, I think all of those furloughs were in our Social Services Division. Secondly, we're utilizing some vacancy management, which is just kind of a fancy way of saying we're keeping positions open for longer than normal, to capture some savings that way. We also suspended some of our contracted services with some of our vendors and providers of services. So specifically, we cut some contracted expenses to TSA, to Faze, and then to Monarch Counseling for Parent Mentor Services. Thankfully, it's been a really good year for placements, as far as financially, we are projected to be under budget for our placement expenses. And with that, I think it's really important just to give a shout-out to Beth, and Barb, and Terry, and all their teams for really doing a good job trying to keep kids in the community and safely in their home whenever possible. It's really a team. It's really a team effort. And then finally, um thankfully Commissioner Helen sat on, sat on the Blue Ribbon Commission. So we have these waivers um for our services. So um we don't necessarily have to see some, some of our clients face to face like normal. Um, so thankfully, we're able to keep our staff safe and our community and clients safe. However, we're still able to bill out for those services as if we're seeing them face to face. And so all of that has been really, really helpful in um pivoting to twenty twenty one. So I continued to trim placement and other expenses. And so I I just want to talk about that a little bit. In the first iteration of the budget, um there was twenty thousand dollars of tax levy set aside for future years Evening Reporting Center. Um, that's some, that's a program that Terry runs. It's a community um, community-based program where we really try hard to keep kids in the own, in their own community versus sending them away to placement. Um, right now, there's a grant that um really finances that programming and the staff that goes towards that programming. I think that grant is up in about a year and a half to two years. And so I think that's something that um Terry and commissioners, everybody should have on their radar. Just how, how is that gonna get funded and how can we start saving for that now? Um unfortunately, this is just not the year to do that um because of all the shortfalls and increased expenses. I did lower projected expenses in all three placement areas, both for child protection, children's mental health, and probation. Um, much of that savings um and expense cutting is in child protection and children's mental health. Um, we've really seen a decrease in those placement expenses this year, um even pre-COVID. So I'm sure COVID has had an impact on our placement expenses. But even before COVID happened, we were starting to see a decrease in placements in those two arenas. Um, so there's just, there's just a lot of great work going on even before COVID hit. And then I had mentioned in a previous slide, um contracted services. So in the twenty twenty one budget, I've eliminated um some contracted services for the parent mentor program. So that's a savings of about, of about thirty seven thousand dollars. And we've decreased um contracted services in other areas to Faze and to TSA. Um, this slide just gives you a snapshot of the budget for twenty twenty one for placements. And it kind of looks at um the accrued costs over the last couple of years. So you can see twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen were um a little tough financially. Um, we are looking to be under budget when twenty twenty ends in the placement area. And budgeted for twenty twenty one, it seems to be wise to continue to project downwards. You'll see a huge um chunk of that um decrease comes in child protection. I just cannot say enough that um they are doing some really great work, some relationship building, and really some great safety planning. Um, children's mental health placements also went down significantly in the twenty twenty one budget. It was also an option to be less conservative in some projected revenues. So I took a look at some of the line items where I thought they could be bumped up a little bit. So I did add some revenue to the adult mental health targeted case management area. And I did that based on um previous year's revenue. It seemed like that could be bumped up a little bit. And I also added some revenue to the child welfare targeted case management line item due to an increase in the reimbursement rates that we received for doing that work. So that also seemed to to be a wise way to increase revenue in those two areas. You'll also see that um twenty twenty one reduces personnel in the HHS budget. So I want to explain that a little bit. Um, so we are using, continuing to use vacancy management in the twenty twenty one budget to reduce personnel expenses. So right now, we have a child protection social worker vacancy. And we have that in the twenty twenty one budget open um through the end of September. So three quarters of the year, we have that not being filled. Um, right now, staffing indicates that that is okay to do. But with COVID, I think we're walking into some unknown territory. So I don't know exactly what's gonna happen. I do know right now that the caseloads in child protection are very manageable. And that has allowed us to reduce placement expenses and also allows us to keep that vacancy open for a while. We also have a full-time case aide in social services. And right now, she's down to a point six FTE as she's using the Faze retirement option. In the twenty twenty one budget, um that is not backfilled until October first. So those are the two vacancies that we've left open for a considerable amount of time in the twenty twenty one budget to kind of help us make ends meet. And then we've also reduced um in the twenty twenty one budget, the FTE by a point five FTE in the income maintenance division. And that may not seem um like a lot, um but every, every bit helps. Um, and if you're that person who's going from full, full-time to half-time, um it's a big deal. So this is being done to really help us get to a zero um increase in in the tax levy. So finally, just to revisit the committee recommendations on how to get that um revenue and expenses closer together, uh we utilized all these up, all these options to get us to a zero percent increase in tax levy for twenty twenty one. So now I'm gonna go into the numbers a little bit. Um, the next three slides are gonna cover each of the three major divisions in Health and Human Services. Um, so those three areas are income maintenance, social services, and public health. Income maintenance consists of child support, fraud, and financial assistance. Um, social services consists of adult protection, child protection, children's and adult mental health, um aging and disability services, licensing, and chemical health. And public health consists of family health, community health, WIC, and things like emergency preparedness, which certainly you don't use that every year, but we have certainly tapped into that a lot um in this global pandemic. So here, this first slide um for income maintenance, you can kind of see how it breaks down between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. You will see that there's both an increase in revenue and in expenses for the income maintenance division. Unfortunately, the expenses um grew by more than the revenue. Um, so the shortfall is about forty thousand in this division. I, I do just want to add some clarity to that. So most of the increases in expenses in this area are due to personnel increases, the, the COLA, the STEP, and the insurance increase. Um, thankfully, income maintenance in twenty twenty was in the computer rotation. So we are not purchasing computers for this, for this group this year since they have new computers um in twenty twenty. Um, so little things like that have helped. And also, this is the division um where in twenty twenty one um there would be an individual going from full-time to half-time. In social services, you can see the difference between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Um, both revenue and expenses decreased. However, there's still a projected shortfall of about sixty six thousand dollars in this division. Um, again, just to explain how we got here, um there's some decrease in placement expenses. So that is really helpful. Um, commitment expenses um increased in the twenty twenty one budget. I know Reese hit on that earlier, that we've seen an increase in commitments. Um, we absolutely have seen that increase. Um, and sometimes that impacts um our bottom line and a few line items. And then increase in in personnel expenses in the social services division. So this is our um area where we have the most FTEs. And so when there's an increase in personnel cost, it does, um it shows in this area. Public health, here's the difference between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. You can see that both revenue and expenses decrease. Um, I do just want to add that um we have a big grant coming to an end in the middle of twenty twenty one. So that's the Planning Implementation Grant. That's a swing of about a hundred thousand dollars. So that's one of the major um drivers in how there was revenue and expenses that decreased in this area. Um, the net difference um in twenty twenty one between revenue and expenses is forty thousand dollars to the bad. And so um I'll talk a little bit in how um we plan on um negating that impact. So this slide really um looks at bringing it together for the county board. So in income maintenance, um expenses exceeded revenues by thirty eight thousand, six hundred fifty five dollars. In social services, expenses exceeded revenues by about sixty six thousand dollars. And in public health, expenses exceeded revenues by forty thousand dollars. And this is after all the cuts to services and the cuts to personnel and 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 other expenses. So what we decided to do was use those savings from twenty twenty to balance the income maintenance and social services budgets. It seems that social services took, took a major hit during COVID and expenses. And with some of the services and and the furloughs, the vacancy management was, seems wise to be able to use those savings into twenty twenty one. Um, so a lot of tough decisions were made in twenty twenty to hopefully get us to a better place in twenty twenty one, not knowing how the pandemic was gonna shake out or the, how the economy is really gonna shake out by the end of all this. And then in public health, there's about that forty thousand dollar deficit. So we are utilizing um the McV third-party restricted funds to balance public health. So at the end of the day, the final outcome for the twenty twenty one HHS budget is that we have an unbalanced budget. There are cuts in expenses and personnel, but we're using reserves and restricted funds along with those cuts that we're implementing so that there's no increase in the tax levy to the HHS department. I would say that with any HHS budget, going into any year, you always have wild cards. So I think that's just amplified moving forward. Um, there's placements, um there's commitments that we've talked about. Um, if somebody is committed to Anoka Metro Regional Hospital, and then they no longer require that level of care, from that moment on, if that individual is at Anoka and continues to be at Anoka and we can't find a different um placement for that individual, that costs us about fifteen hundred dollars a day. Um, so if that's thirty days that an individual's there past their level of care, that's a forty five thousand dollar um hit to the budget and that's all tax levies. So we just don't ever know how how commitments are, are gonna pan out in any given year. Um, we're also in the middle, maybe even in the beginning of a pandemic, so what's gonna happen? And that absolutely impacts the economy. And I think we're in a difficult place to know what's, what's exactly gonna happen. I would, I would like to explain that when economic times are difficult, um there is an increased caseload and increased reliance on some of our financial assistance programs. So I am concerned about caseload for our financial workers just because I would, I think it's very safe to predict that their caseloads would be going up next year if we continue to see an economic downturn. Um, on the radar, I know Terry mentioned this a little bit. Um, so if we want to do some reforming in our systems, we really have to look at bolstering um some type of services to individuals. And that doesn't mean it has to be through Health and Human Services. It could mean uh more mental health services in the jail and provided to law enforcement, partnering with law enforcement uh on ride-alongs to individuals who are struggling with mental health concerns. Um, so that is on our radar and um I think that's very difficult for HHS to afford right now. Um, it's difficult for law enforcement to afford right now also. Also, we're recovering in, from the pandemic, not only as it pertains to like the community health, but also any larger financial impact it has on the county and and the state and in the nation. Um, and then looking forward to sustainable changes, I, I think we have to keep the pressure on to see or, or to really help in any way that we can um for Malax Band to become and gain that initiative tribe status. And that is all I have. So at this point, I'm gonna try to stop sharing and um just see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Becky. Uh, you know, the, the HHS committee, Steve and I met with Becky uh when a couple, three weeks ago. I can't remember, but anyway, um as she pointed out in her slides, we gave some recommendation from that committee what um what we'd like to have her work on. And, and you were spot on, Becky. You did a marvelous job of listening and, and converting that to something that we can live with. I, I, I do want to caution the board anytime you use um, you know, reserve revenues of any kind, at some point, the budget, you, you're kicking that can down the road, so to speak. We, we have Becky's work very hard at, at keeping on top of that stuff. So we were, uh, I, I think we're beyond lucky. We, it was planned to keep those funds uh in check. And so we have those reserve funds to use. You know, that McV funding is, in the public health arena is gonna run out at some point. We've known that from day one. Um, but uh this is the time to use it. And so um, I don't know. Steve, do you have anything to add from the committee's standpoint?
Well, not really, except, you know, I mean, we, we kind of directed Becky to use her best judgment on, on what she felt would work. And I think Becky did an excellent job. Uh, really, I, I'm impressed. So. Um, and I agree with Steve, sometimes it, it's, you know, not prudent to use reserves and sometimes it is. And I think this case, it probably is a time that we should do that. So I guess that's about all I'd have to say.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Matt.
Um, lovely, yes. So Becky, how often is the level of care rising up and um becoming, or being a problem for us? As far as, because I know they're not just gonna let that person walk away, so they still need care. So that, that's why I always struggle with that.
That's a great question. And um first of all, I just want to apologize if there's a lot of background noise. There's some construction going on in Main, down Main Street. And so it's very loud to me, but hopefully uh nobody else hears it. Um, um, it's becoming, I would say, almost more of an issue. And I think COVID has impacted that some. Um, so it's really hard um to vet out COVID versus other times. But even before COVID, we had an individual um at Anoka for about a month's time because they can't go from that level of care just to, just to being on their own, living at home successfully. And then Anoka has to um approve the placement. And sometimes we, they're a little, a little skittish to do that. Uh, and so we really, really caught between a rock and a hard place with those, with those cases. Um, it's unfortunate that it's all tax levy because that is just a huge chunk of change. I, I think um hopefully we can work with the, the state on that in the future to try to get some kind of split share on that. Um, but I would see it, I see it becoming more of an issue, not less. And that's why it was increased in the twenty twenty one budget.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any advice for Becky? I appreciate all the work you put into that, Becky. It was a wonderful report. Thank you.
Thank you. And a huge thanks to the management team too at HHS. They, they were, they're always very helpful.
And the construction noise is, is uh, we'll blame it on Mark because he's trying to get that street done before he promised me he'd get it done before school started. So they can't miss a beat this week. And saying that, if we got no more questions for Becky, Becky, we're gonna move on to highway. Mark?
All right. Um, just as a quick overview, with uh the nuts and bolts here, the, the billing maintenance, uh we're looking for a levy increase of about two percent, so not too bad. Eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty seven dollars. And uh public. And uh Public Works, uh Road and Bridge Fund, we're looking at uh levy increase of two point six percent. So that's fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we've still got one point two million dollars in sales tax funds scheduled for, for next year. I don't see any impact on that. We've included the, the, the two point nine percent COLA health insurance increases, as guided by uh Administrator, Administrator's Office. And we, we currently have thirty uh full-time positions budgeted for Public Works. And uh we had, we had five for building maintenance. We're down to four in building maintenance. Uh, we have a retirement coming up. We'll be down to three. And we're, we're, we're gonna just fill that void right now with a cleaning service and see how that goes. It's potential that we could save a little money next year if that works. And could be down to three full-time for personnel for next year, just as a trial run. Uh, and then we're, we're currently, we have a retirement we haven't filled, so we're at twenty nine in Public Works, and I expect another retirement here this fall. So we would be at twenty eight. And so we would temporarily not fill those two retirements. Um, uh, and, and we'd be budgeting for twenty eight full-time positions in Public Works. And those two positions are in the engineering technician group, uh, so it doesn't affect uh snow blowing and things like that. Uh, same, you know, otherwise the big thing, you know, most things were, the big items, we're kinda trying to hold the line on. Um, we can continue to buy, you know, five, five mark squads and then probably six fleet vehicles and start replacing some tandems again. So we're holding line on that. And then no increase in the building fund, we'd be looking at seventy five thousand and probably be putting that into the roof on the sixteen ten building. Um, and then anything else we have left over, we go into the parking. Um, and I guess there's more to talk about on that, but just at this point, that's what we're, we're looking at as an overview. Uh, one big issue for us next year is uh we're projecting a fifteen percent reduction in gas tax revenues and um, the other issue, the other monies that go into our, our state aid revenues. Uh, it looks like vehicle purchases uh have increased significantly, so you know, we don't really know if it's gonna be a fifteen percent reduction, if it's gonna be more or less. Um, but we break that out into uh the different areas that we get the funds. It's about six hundred and fifty thousand in our regular construction account. We will have a million dollars in there at the end of the year to carry over into twenty twenty one, so that will help with the blow. But we did have to push back a project next year uh that you guys approved at the, at the last meeting. Um, our, our municipal maintenance is ninety thousand dollars and that basically is money that we help use to operate and do certain maintenance activities, mostly, you know, the more expensive ones in the summer. And our regular maintenance is four hundred and thirty five thousand. So we're, we're over half a million dollars of reduction in our operating money. And we'll kinda go through that. We're, we're looking at a combination, you know, of holding back those positions and some reductions across the board and some of our maintenance activities that we do in the summer is we can control that. We can't control the winter as much, so it's kinda what we're looking at. And then municipal construction's down about a hundred and thirty seven thousand. And that hasn't, that shouldn't impact anything for next year, so. So overall, it's a one point three million dollar reduction in our state revenues. And, and so we've kinda just broken that out and how we can chip away at that number. It's a big number. You know, it's a, it's overall, you know, it's a ten percent reduction to our department. And so I assume you don't want me to ask for one point three million dollars in levy money, but if you'd like to do that, we'll take it.
Assumption, Mark.
Um, as we go through.
Here for nothing.
So any questions on, on the big overview? Okay. You know, as I go through, you know, administration, we're not really changing anything. Uh, that's a three point eight percent increase overall, and that's essentially, you know, we got some training uh expected. We, you know, we had a retirement and, and Todd Lindstrom was our bridge inspector, so we're looking at getting some training for our assistant engineer to try to pick up that. Um, we're hiring a consultant to do that this fall. It's about twenty thousand dollars. So it's not a huge number, but we'd like to work our assistant engineer, Aaron, into doing that role maybe in a year or two, so we gotta start getting him the training for that. In engineering, we're seeing uh about twenty percent reduction in, in permanent salaries. Uh, that therefore will reduce, reduce our overtime significantly. Um, and our county contribution for health insurance, so that's a big number. Uh, that kinda carries across the board. We'll have a little increase in professional services. I got a ten percent increase in that, a hundred and ten thousand. Most of that, it can go up or down and it's, it's, it's just money in and money out with the state that we can collect. So if that number goes higher, it's, you know, our revenue, our corresponding revenue goes higher, so it's not a big deal. Um, and everything else is relatively flat, flat, but our, our actual construction number is going up thirty five percent. We'll have six million, a hundred and thirty thousand in construction next year, so a little bit more on contract construction. Our maintenance, uh, we've got the uh salary increases in that, so it's about a five percent increase. Uh, professional services, we've got a forty thousand dollar reduction. That's our, that's our chloriding mostly. So we will, we will have to do less chloriding next year. Um, fifteen thousand in traffic striping. Uh, we did quite a bit more this year, so that'll help offset doing a little bit less next year. Uh, a hundred thousand in rental agreements, so that's our, our ditching, graveling. Um, those types of activities, uh, center lane culverts. So a lot of those activities were busy all summer. We're gonna be doing less of those with a contractor. We'll have to do a little bit more work with what we can do with our own staff. Uh, thirty two thousand in aggregates, we'll buy less gravel next year. We're gonna have some on hand to carry over from this year. And, and so those are the big, big things. And overall, our maintenance uh area is down eight point one percent, so if those numbers from the state get better, then those numbers will just get put back in there. So you know, those, that money will just get back to where we'd normally be if, if it, if we get a surprise. Fleet services, everything's pretty level. Looks like, you know, we reduced the diesel a little bit because the price is still pretty stable. Uh, and you got your increase for staff, for, for wages and insurance. And that's, overall, it's a half a percent increase in main, in fleet services. Our revenues were, we are budgeting nine thousand dollars for permit fees. So that's not something we had in our budget before, so we'll see how that comes in. So we're getting a little bit of revenue there. Uh, two point six percent in the property tax. Uh, everything else is, is, you know, pretty well line. Thirteen point nine percent and thirteen point seven percent reduction in maintenance and municipal and regular maintenance. It's not fifteen because we actually got a little bit more this year than what was budgeted, so it's not a fifteen percent reduction because it's part of the budget uh or we're actually getting a little bit more this year, so I'm basing it off what we actually got this year. And uh our, like I said, our, our regular construction's about four point seven million. And we're projecting to get about three point seven million, so it's a million dollars uh that we've carried over from this year that'll go into next year, so, so that should balance that out. Overall, it's a twelve percent increase in our revenues and twelve percent in our expenditures for total budget about eleven point five million, so that's our public works. And that's pretty well line, a typical year. We're in the ten, eleven, twelve million dollar range year over year, so. Building maintenance, uh, we're kinda up in the air on what our rental revenue is. At this point, we're just kinda plugging, plugging in what we have currently. Uh, we're maybe anticipating most of next year isn't gonna change. Um, I think David had maybe had a goal by the fall or towards the end of next year. We could maybe make that transition out of the South Pine Government Center and the city could take it over. Um, like I say, we're, we're, we're budgeting for four staff. If we don't fill that fourth position and we continue with the cleaning contract, the cleaning's gonna be about four thousand a month, so it's pretty hard to, when you factor in the insurance and the wages. You know, you're, we're gonna spend more than that on, on employee. So the benefit is, is we have an employee that can do some other things. The, the good thing about the cleaning service that Pete pointed out is when somebody's on vacation, the cleaning service continues no matter what. So right now, if somebody's on vacation or sick or out on leave, you know, Pete and the other guys have to make up for it somehow. Um, whether that's overtime or not doing other things, so the cleaning service, you know, wouldn't be interrupted based on the employee's use of PTO and such, so that would be one positive, but we'll, we'll look at it and see how it goes. We had some issues last time, but we're hoping that we can work those out this time around. Everything else, we pretty much have flat. Our utilities are down this year. So I'm anticipating there'll be more use of the building next year and things will kinda get back to normal. Um, so not gonna make any cuts on that at this point. Um, so overall, uh, about five hundred and ninety one thousand, seven hundred and twenty five dollars to maintain your buildings and pay for utilities and all that, so not a big number in your overall budget, but an important, important part of things, so. And we ended up with a two percent levy increase on that, so. So that's what I got. Um, not a lot of change. Uh, fifty thousand dollars is a lot of help for us because that's fifty thousand less we gotta cut this year. And it helps us next year, uh, twenty twenty two, and you know, our baseline's a little bit higher. So that helps us out down the road too, so. Um, if you got extra money and you wanna give us more, we certainly would, you know, increase those maintenance activities. That's where that money would go if, if there's any other money to hand out. But uh, right now, we're, we, we can get by with fifty thousand, we think, and we'll work around whatever we get here, so. Any questions?
Thanks, thanks for the can-do uh attitude, Mark. I mean, I appreciate all of you folks for.
Yeah, well, you just try to stay positive with it and work with what you got. We can do about it, so.
Yeah.
Some people might notice some difference, but overall, you know, when we show up and replace culverts and driveway approaches, ninety percent of the people, they don't, you know, they don't know one way or the other or care one way or the other, you know. Once in a while, we get a complaint that we can, but for the most part, we're just being proactive and replacing things that need to be replaced, so.
It's, it's like, we could save a lot of money by not buying squad cars and tandem dump trucks for a year. But then the next year, you gotta spend twice as much to catch up.
Yeah, no, we got, we got a stable number in there. Like we said, you know, if that thing can go up in the future, that'd be great. But at least it's something that we can keep, keep using over time and, and it's not gonna, it's not a bond, bond that's gonna run out and we're gonna have to scramble again, so. And, and, and the uh, the CLS tax money really has been a lifesaver for us to kinda keep some of those other roads and some of these bridge projects going. And so I'm, you know, I'm hoping that's a, that's something we can count on as we go onto the future because that, that seems to be a really good decision you guys made and the public seems to not be upset about it, so.
Any questions for Mark? Wow, we're cruising. General budget discussion. Well, so far, I like the direction we've gone. And uh, or, or where we're at. I know we've got a couple departments coming in next week who have most of our increase seems to be in the public safety, so we'll hear from them next week and maybe maybe they'll uh have something figured out by them that doesn't have a half a million dollar increase attached to it. David, do you have any direction for us?
Uh, nothing specific. I think Becky laid out a strategy that is probably appropriate or gonna be true for the county in that in balancing the twenty twenty one budget, there are some savings from twenty twenty that we're gonna look to carry forward. Uh, and then there also potentially could be some twenty twenty CARES Act funding that will assist with saving twenty twenty county money that we can carry forward. Uh, and then the rest of it will be looking at services that may need to be reduced through programs or staffing. And then uh, any gap that's left is gonna require a levy increase. So we've got till the end of September to kinda work all of those details and get the equation to balance.
Yeah, we got, we got some big balls in the air yet that, you know, could, could affect you know, one or two percent levy increases type issues, you know. I appreciate the work everybody has done so far that we've heard from. How about the rest of the board? Anything you wanna throw out there? Tomorrow morning, we're gonna meet uh for the first time since, I believe, March in person in Sandstone and we're gonna we're gonna, the, one of the reasons uh we wanted to do that is to have our um all be in the same room as we hear from our I always say the wrong word, David. Is, is it the bond counsel or is that what we call?
Our financial advisor.
Financial advisor. I always call it bond counsel, but I I guess I got the wrong terminology. Financial advisor. Kelly, do you have anything and that we should be thinking about overnight with that?
Um, and nothing more necessarily than what um you heard last week. Um, just really start, really think about considering that new project money and, and adding in some things. Um, because again, um, you're not gonna see interest rates this low. And we can do some, some interesting things with the bond refund, refunding that will hopefully take some pressure off of the levy over the next year, two years, three years.
Our minds wide open and and uh hopefully get them filled up. The, when you just live in the house and you're in and out all day, you don't realize how many times that grandfather clock and cuckoo clock go off, but my goodness. Anyway, anybody have anything else for today? I wanna thank all of our presenters. You did an awesome job. I love it. Um, it gives us a lot of great um things to think about instead of just throwing a number at the wall and say, figure it out. So you, you people have done a lot of. So you, you people have done a lot of, a lot of work, and it does not go unnoticed, so thank you. If uh nobody's got anything else, I guess we could adjourn the meeting. I'll declare it adjourned. Thank you.